I was there.
The 31st, today's my father's birthday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Doherty.
So I started doing some reading.
Well, we were going to open the meeting and just recess until you got here.
And here you are.
Unfortunately, our major agenda item today was a review of the pension reform and Mark Zelensky as the chairman of the retirement board, but unfortunately, his basement is flooded considerably with a lot of water, and it's a, what do you call it? It's a finished basement, so it's not just like a cement floor. So he couldn't make it. So therefore, we have no real agenda today, other than our usual business. So unless...
Well, I have reviewed the Needs Action folder. I kind of thought whether I would move to accept.
Okay. Second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, another post. Were you in favor, motion carries.
I might bring up something else. Perhaps Sheila could speak to it. We both attended the Commission of Women last night.
Oh.
Yeah, and Sheila spoke, so she...
Well, you know, I really hadn't intended to speak, but they were stating at the end that you could speak about your agency. No, they said that you could do your agency, and I just thought that with all of the issues that they had discussed that concern women, they talked a lot about the economics on the Cape, transportation, childcare, and the issues that women face in regards to domestic violence, protection of children, that sort of thing. And many of these things the county has taken the lead on and has been involved with for years, particularly the transportation bill has been on that board for quite a while, and it does look like it's going forward now with the new executive director, and it's all coming together as it should. And, you know, we have supported and worked with the district attorney in regards to Children's Cove, and Mary Leclair was there, and, you know, she was one of the commissioners when Rob O'Leary was commissioner to create that center and partner with the district attorney's office. So I basically just wanted to state how the county is a layer of government in between the state and towns, and we are a layer of government that can be very effective in addressing these issues where the issues stay very local, and the solutions are locally based, because we are a region that can work in that way. And it's all about cooperation and collaboration. And, you know, everybody, even in that room, they were all talking about their townships of what was going on, and yet there are regional solutions, and that is where the county is more effective, and people, I think, are getting a better understanding of that. But whenever we can push how we are the convener in many of these larger issues and can partner and leverage funds so that, you know, it is addressed in a larger way, I got up and I also wanted to make sure that even though there were only women speaking, and it seemed as though only women were allowed to speak, there was one gentleman in the audience, and that was Bill Doherty, and I wanted to make sure that he got recognition for his work on the RTA and all of these other, you know, even housing, all of the issues that have been going forward, you know, you've been involved with before Pat and I got here, and we've been focused on those issues as well. So it was a very, it was their first gathering to be an information and public forum for women's issues. I thought Mary Leclair made a very good point that this room should be much more heavily attended, and I do think in the future, as that word gets out, it will be. There are some very passionate and capable women on the Cape. Janet Barton is the chair of that group. We have many of our local, you know, women in leadership, and just citizens, you know, women citizens active, involved, citizens involved. So I think they're doing a great job, and I do hope that their efforts are more recognized in the public arena. So I thought it was very worthwhile, and...
Well, I just wanted to mention, although it was difficult for me, I did keep my mouth shut.
You did.
And the reason I did is that I don't think that at a forum full of women, that a guy should get up and make comments about how things were supposed to work or what my opinion was. I think that symbolically, I was trying to represent the need for all men to listen.
Yes.
Okay, and pay attention.
So did you speak?
No.
No, you did not.
And that was on purpose. But I'm glad that, you know, that I started to keep my mouth shut, very uncharacteristic for me, but I thought it was important, and hopefully that silence got, you know, got across that more men need to pay attention, need to listen, all of the issues about domestic violence, about childcare. I mentioned the reason, was it in the interest of full disclosure, that my mother was quite an athlete, and my godmother was a first sergeant with the Army Corps, so I have a sort of a different experience in growing up, and my grandmother was, of course, very strong. So I have a different experience in growing up as far as, you know, a relationship with women, but I was brought up to believe that there was a partnership that is supposed to exist between men and women, and to be an equal partnership, you have to recognize and respect the equality of both sides.
Right. And, you know, my, you know, my feelings on that is that in these types of forums, the discussion also has to be recognizing the male partnership as well, and it's not just, you know, I know that women still are struggling for equal pay, and there is still that glass ceiling up there, but I do think that times have changed, and men like yourself and the younger men coming up are much more willing and open to sharing the responsibilities of the household than they were before. The guy just doesn't go out to work, and the woman takes care of the household. There is much more of a partnership, and I think that has to be recognized, because those are great strides for women and for men. And, you know, I never like to see things spiral off into a male-bashing thing, because I think it's a partnership.
Now, interestingly enough, last Thursday night, I was up at Dapson College, I'm an academic coach up there, and I've been doing this for several years, and they run the same case, and one of the, there's three cases. And one of the cases on, what do you do in the case of sexual harassment in the workplace? Now, what I had noticed over time was when there is a female student in a group, you know, the guys at least recognize and are sensitive, you know, that there's a woman there, when there's not, like the last time, it basically was, well, she's just gonna have to wait until we get done with it. So I told that group, and I told the group that met today, we're trying to sort of work around the sexual harassment issue, because the project was so important, and the guy that was running it, who was also a harasser, you know, was considered to be essential to the operation. I pointed out to them, the law is very clear, you know, that sexual harassment, there is a zero tolerance policy, and indeed, if they were working for a company that had an affirmative action, you know, policy, that they had no choice but to take what I would call action and not say, you know, not bring a woman in and say, we've got to let this go until we, you know, until we get this piece of business passed. It's, it is at that beginning, and after I said to this group, I was surprised, because, you know, I had thought that, you know, the young fellows coming up through college, and these are all juniors from 2021, that they would know that, because they teach ethics at the faculty college.
Excuse me.
And they basically said, nobody ever told us that before. You're told now.
Right.
Okay, and view that as an absolute fact.
Right.
There is a reason for that, and the reason for zero tolerance is that you will never get past these issues of, you know, of glass ceilings or anything else. In our history, you know, the women in New Jersey had the vote after the revolution, and that was taken away from the early 19th century and not given, you know, not given back until 1920. Imagine that. You know, the republic was over 150 years old before, you know, women cut the vote, and we considered being enlightened. Now, there was one other thing we both attended in the last week, and that was the town government forum for engaging...
Community college.
At the community college to engage young, you know, young adults that was sponsored by the Cape Cod professionals.
The young professionals, yeah.
And that was quite enlightening, because several of the kids that were there, when they were given the town meeting warrant that said, we want to have an override, and they just had gross amounts, $500,000 for the police, $300,000 for fire, you know, $50,000 for recreation, and maybe it was $25,000 for schools.
And this was all mock. This wasn't really a real town meeting, but it was a practice. Go ahead.
Okay, so there was one young woman that got up and said, why should we vote for this when you're not telling how it's going to be spread around? And the answer that they were given, I thought was very unsatisfactory, which is, well, you have a responsibility to get on and talk to the selectmen about this ahead of time. If you're in the forum, and this is the, this is the argument that supports all the things we do over at Cape Cod Commission, everybody has to hear the same thing at the same time in order to make a judgment.
Right.
Okay, so in any case, I thought she was, you know, she was right on target, and there was another couple of kids that, you know, that spoke up, and their parents had said afterwards, you know, they never opened their mouth for anything, and this, they were being drawn out. So I was very hopeful that they did run it. I thought it was well-attended.
Very well-attended.
And I think it was taped.
Yes, I believe, yes, I believe it was, and hopefully that will be on, on...
C3?
Yeah, C3. The other thing that came out of that is, is that, that is that being dismissed, like it's up to you. These are young people who are trying to raise their families, and we all know that when you're trying to work and raise your family, it's very hard to get beyond the sun.
I need to write this down. This is new information.
No, but I mean, Bill, please, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but I do feel, and I just came from a meeting, and Paul Nedzicki says this very well out of the Cape Cod Commission, as public servants, it is our duty to respond to questions completely and transparently, over and over, no matter how frustrating it may be, as though, you know, we've been saying this, how many times have we had to repeat this, but we still have to address those who are unclear as to what it is we're doing, and that is our duty. And I do think that it's not that much more work to be able to give those details and those facts to people who don't have a chance to get to every planning board, every selectman's hearing, all of the things that you have to attend to really be totally educated to why the budget is being set up as it is. It also was very interesting that they did go to education, to those more kitchen table items than, you know, they were, why do our public safety people get more than the education, whereas if we invest in education, you'll have less need for, you know, some of these mechanisms, which is the old, you know, the time-old argument. And it was interesting how they put it to demographics and that sort of thing. So I applaud the young professionals. They are trying to recognize that even though they are family, they have families, and they're working hard to raise them right and do all the things they have to do, they're understanding that to be aware of what's going on in your community is the only way to forward. So I thought it was very well-attended, very well-done.
And by the way, the second president of it is a woman, Erin.
Yes, Erin, yeah.
And of course, it was, the first president was Gary Sheen, who did go to Boston College, by the way.
Of course. Is there another, you know, the city on the hill?
Is this the Hyannis version, or chapter of the young professionals, or is this the Cape Cod?
The Cape Cod, it's called Cape Cod Young Professionals.
But do they have different branches, or is it all one group?
No, I think it's all one group now, and they change their networking, you know, they move around, so...
Oh, okay.
Now, Falmouth has, they might have a subset, because Falmouth is larger, but I think it's all part of the same group.
Anyway, there was good stuff going on.
Very good stuff, very good stuff.
And one of the, one of the benefits that we have in being county commissioners is that we are representing the opportunity to, let's say, to put a regional view on things as opposed to a more parochial, narrow one. And by the way, one of the things that had come up, which bears on their, you know, the Commission of Women's attempt to get some, consolidate some reference, is that our 2-1-1 participation already provides a lot of that opportunity to discover where you can get counseling, where you can get specific kinds of support, where you can get the kinds of things that you need in order to, let's say, to meet some of the, you know, some of the urgent things that, you know, that come up with regard to, let's say, especially in the case of a lot of single parents, who in this culture tend to be more women than men, and even, even in dual-parent families, women have an inordinately greater responsibility for, you know, for dealing with the family and child issues, and we need to do, we need to emphasize that we're trying to connect the resources that are available to support can be easily accessed, and I think this is one of the biggest things that, you know, that the Human Service Department has done, is to, let's say, to develop this 2-1-1 resource that, you know, that will allow people to connect what they need in order to survive in what's becoming a more challenging, you know, kind of an atmosphere.
I agree. Now, I also have just two other updates I wanted to give you. This week, Bob Polster from the State Department of Housing and Department of Transition, yeah, the transition, and how they've, you know, the person who's really heading our lead contact to the regional network to end homelessness. So he came down to our full policy board meeting on Monday, and again, it has been very good results from that. That was an effort of bringing agencies together. There's a new paradigm that they're trying to put in place across the state, so they set up these regional networks through, through different, different parts of the state. We are the Cape and Islands and Southeast. And, you know, when you're bringing agencies who have dealt with state and different initiatives in the past, it's almost, and, you know, I'm part of that healthcare network, but you always say, like, you know, I know better than the doctor, because we're, we're on the ground, and here they are coming up with the, with the new solution, and we're the workers. That has really taken a turn, because there, the end result is that there is more collaboration, there is more communication between our lead agencies that address homeless issues and those that are on the fringe and bordering hard times, and there is more collaboration on where the grants are, and instead of everybody going for the same grant, there is a much more coordinated effort on to how to approach those grants, so that one agency will go after, you know, will frame it around the families, one agency will focus on their expertise, maybe individuals, et cetera, and it has been more successful than when everybody's going for the same thing. The end result is, they have asked that that continue. That grant ends in September, and right now, there isn't money in the budget, but what they heard to the state is, okay, we're on board, and we see, we see the benefit of this exercise, we want to continue, and we're determined to continue, whether there's funding or not, but if there is funding to continue, we just now put in that hotline, which is a crisis for homelessness of the day on that particular night, not a 2-1-1 number. That was, that was, to me, a success of this, and I do believe it's because the county was the lead, you know, convening agency in the pass-through on that. Beth, by being detached from any of these, us being the honest broker, has been able to bring people together in a transparent way, in an open way, and it has really, I think, done a great benefit to the human service departments in our local area and our regional area. There's more work to be done, it needs to be spread out, and, but that was a very good meeting, and even Polster walked away saying, you know, the county has done a great job in bringing this together in the way we imagined, but it has, you have made it a reality in a way that we couldn't have expected. So that was a great thing. And I also want to just touch on the NSTAR issue, you know, last week, it was stated that, you know, several weeks ago, there was a meeting called by Senator Murray and the legislative Cape delegation to meet with the Department of Agriculture, and NSTAR wasn't at that meeting, but we were there, I was there, the commission was there, and the legislators. We asked, we put forward a proposal that if we could have a 12-month moratorium to the Department of Agriculture, that that would give us a chance to do mapping of all the wells across the region, to be accurate, to be safe, and that we could basically reassure people that this is where the risk is, and this is where we feel that the best practices are in place, and we feel confident, are not confident in the end, but I do think that in cooperating with Department of Agriculture and NSTAR and the commission, we can in a year. So the commission was putting together that letter, they kept asking NSTAR for different information, and of course, you're dealing with a certain level of authority immediately. So by the time they got the information from NSTAR, NSTAR issued a statement saying, you know, we're going to give it 30 days, and then we're going to proceed. That's how it came across in the paper. That took everyone by surprise, especially since Patty Daly and members of the commission staff were in touch with the commission, with NSTAR. So I, through different channels, got to people on the next, on the higher level of this, this conversation, and we are now in discussions more on a regional basis. What came out of the legislative meeting, and Senator O'Leary was there, was that this is something that the county could handle probably much more effectively than if the state and the legislators got in, and that is what we were attempting to do with that letter and that statement being issued on Friday. I called the different people that I was able to get in touch with, so we are now in communication. It will be an action from the, from the county, and I think we're on a good, good place to go forward. So I do think that there will be some further talks next week.
Further talks with us?
Yeah, we all have further talks.
They haven't agreed to anything yet.
They, they haven't, but they haven't disagreed in their, what they were stating was that that was an extension of the public comment period, not that that was the extension of, you know, this is, this is the deadline, and we're going ahead regardless. So, you know, like everything else, everything gets a little miscommunicated, and I think even from the top to the mid-level within their own corporation, that wasn't quite understood, and everybody is listening with a little bit of a defense mechanism in front of them, so not all of the, not all of the true intentions are coming through, so I think we've broken that down, and we're going forward, but...
Is it only the private wells or the public wells?
Well, it's private wells, really, if we do a mapping of, yeah, we, you know, there's, there's the public wells, the private wells, and as it turns out, the commission has been working with the town of Eastham to be doing this, and, you know, they have been identifying the wells. So we're just asking, so that we can have facts at the end of the year, to be able to explain to people exactly what is happening, where, that we, that we agree with, that we feel confident that, that their, their health and safety is, has been recognized and put in check, and that whatever goes forward in a year will be with a seal of approval.
I hope that as you go forward with this, and I did scan the letter that came out of the Cape Cod Commission, that there be some recognition that there are commercial agriculture along the rights-of-way.
Absolutely.
And that effort, and that was part of the economic vitality that we're trying to develop here, and that should be taken into account as well.
Right, and we did state that. I did speak to Leo Kakounis several weeks ago about how this can actually impact the organic farmers and, and the farmers on the Cape. So there's a lot of different layers here that we don't want to, that we have to protect and take into consideration, and that is really the intention of the county. So I think we're on the right page. I think progress is going to be made, and that's really, you know, I don't, I want to get into...
Well, I think people need to know, because...
Assumptions.
Because when I went to the meeting at Howard's, there were people from Eastham there as well, that, you know, that were bringing up their concerns, and of course, the feeling of the people in the room were, you're putting Agent Orange, you know, along the, you know, along the right of way, and they were quite concerned, with good reason.
Yeah, fear is...
And the other part, as far as NSTAR, NSTAR has never recognized the responsibility of coming up with what we used to call zero potential, you know, at substations and places like that, and that has more danger to anybody that keeps creatures or, you know, keeps cattle because of, because of the effect, you know, on the, on the animals, and that has to do with, you know, let's say, with an appropriate attention to the grounding and, you know, and say, and protection of their, of their system as it interfaces between the transmission lines and, you know, and the distribution network. There are a lot of things that are involved in it, but the most important issue is, I hope that we are never in a position where people don't believe that we would do everything that we could to protect their interests.
And that's exactly what we are doing, and I do think that we're making positive progress. So that's all I want to report. We'll have more discussions next week, and I'll continue to do that.
Sheila and I attended the first annual award brunch, the Andy K. Mark Award. Remember Andy? That was Saturday.
He was a good friend.
Yeah.
Isn't he at a memorial?
There's a memorial in April 24th, I think, right? But his son was there, and his son's wife Elaine K. Mark, who used to, who worked in the White House under Clinton, and, and their daughter, Chloe, and in fact, his son spoke very well at the end, and Steve Grossman was the speaker, and he does a really incredible job of speaking.
He was amazing.
I'm sure if you've never heard of him...
Yes, I have.
You probably have, because he ran for governor.
Right.
I mean, he just, he starts out, he has a thread that runs through his, everything he said, and ties it all together, the beginning, the end, everything. It's amazing. You always know what that thread is when he starts, but you're never quite sure how it's going to end up. And he's an excellent, excellent speaker, and he did a really wonderful job describing Andy's life and his contributions. Well, no, he was to get the first award, and then...
Andy got the first award.
Andy got the first award.
They were trying to do that, this was all put into place before Andy passed away to honor him, because...
And give him the first Andy K. Mark Award, and then every year, it'll be someone else.
Well, we've been doing him since the EDC started.
I know, 13, well, 13 years ago, yeah.
Just to go on Steve Grossman, I actually did say to him afterwards that he was not close, he did not know Andy, but he knows his children. So they asked him to do this eulogy, in a sense, and how many times have, you know, I can even go back to my own father's funeral, where the priest didn't know him, but does a eulogy, and it's, it's really sort of gratuitous, you know, schlock, you know, and, but he did his research, he came to understand this gentleman, and not only that, but he took it as a teaching. To me, it was almost, in a sense, a sermon. It was really very moving. He was, he was really great. So I give a lot of credit to Steve Grossman for doing such an eloquent job.
Really, really, very well-done.
And, and, you know, I did not know Andy K. Mark. He was aging and disengaging when I, when I, but he was always put out there, like, don't you know Andy? And I wish I had just called out and said, could I come and meet you?
He was attending meetings until last year.
I know, we did not, I did not...
But you know what he did say about Andy, and I thought it was so, so Andy when he said it. He talked about, you know, his, his, his time as an economist, you know, and all that sort of thing. He was founder of the World Bank, writer of the Marshall Plan.
Yeah, he was the writer that wrote the Marshall Plan.
Helped Italy actually reform its government and its economy after World War II.
Right, he was amazing, yeah, amazing.
He did all of these things. And then he said, and Andy, if he, if he disagreed with someone in the, in the area of, say, mathematical theory or economic theory or something like that, he didn't debate it, and he didn't get into an argument, he wrote a book, and so he... And so, which I thought was so incredible. And Andy actually has written about six or seven books, which I had no idea he did. No, but that's what he did. If he disagreed with some person in, in some theory or other, instead of just getting all worked up about it, he'd just write a book.
He'd write a book.
And explain his whole, his whole interpretation of what that theory is. I thought that was amazing.
Yeah, he's not, you know, these are, these are people who were men of their times. They were really men of their time. I mean, he came out of the Depression and knew what it was like to be hungry, and was able to work very hard. He lost his father at a young age, so they were sort of.
On their own.
Right on, right in the middle of the Depression.
Born in 1915.
Right, so to.
A long, he was 95.
Yeah, so to go forward and get into Harvard and work hard and to contribute to the world as we know it today is really an amazing thing, and.
Well, the whole issue of public service, what he was all about was public service.
Right, so.
And his wife, who was an extremely accomplished woman in her own right.
Right, right. And Steve brought her in there, and he really brought in the whole thing. So he did, he did a great job, and that was, that was lovely time.
That was very nice. It was very lovely.
He was one of the biggest donors.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know.
I didn't see your name on his website.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I guess that's it. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
No, that's it? Motion towards you?
I motion towards you?
All of you, say hi.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we have.